Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Board of Commissioners. Please stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Steve, can I have motion to approve?
Sure. Move to approve the minutes of November 30th.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussions, directions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. I almost said roll call, Rhonda.
I'd be honored.
Okay, we will move into our resolutions this morning. And first up, we have Amy Lang and Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have 11 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth is cash transfers for the costs of the countywide audit in various funds. The fourth, oops, excuse me, fifth is authorizing the purchase of 5,600 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center, and that went to Cuyahoga Landmark at the lowest bid price of $2.419 per gallon. The sixth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The seventh is approving the amendment number one to the agreement with Aramark Correctional Services Incorporated. This is their annual adjustment for food services at the Medina County home. The eighth resolution is amending the bylaws of the Medina County Drug Advisory Committee, also known as McDAC, and adopting the grant guidelines and the application for fiscal year 2022. The ninth resolution is approving a memorandum of agreement between the Medina County Office for Older Adults and the Suprema Senior Center Cafe. This is going to be operated then by, I know it's in here, Medina Creative, Medina County Creative Housing and Affiliate. The 10th resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $604,192.09.
Move to approve the 11 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? I just, the gas bid, it surprises me that out of eight or so entities, we only had two actual bids.
And the folks did say that it's becoming more challenging to guarantee the delivery. So we normally call the night before, get the pricing, they leave us a message or call in the morning, and then we can make that decision. But just again, with delivery commitments and so forth, it's been challenging.
Yeah. Interesting. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next up, we have Holly Miran, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have five new hires, one at Job and Family Services, two in Maintenance, and two in Transit, one promotion in Transit, 10 rate increases, five in Sanitary, one in Building, one at the County Home, one at Office for Older Adults, and two at Job and Family Services, one rate correction in Building, one leave of absence at Job and Family Services, one return from leave at Job and Family Services, three resignations, two at Transit, and one in Building, a change in retirement in Sanitary, and a retirement in Sanitary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Five resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the purchase of a Caterpillar C8 diesel generator for the Spieth Tank Water Pumping Station. There's a 40-week lead time on that material, so we were hoping to get that moving. The second is declaring the necessity to extend an existing sanitary water main along Center Road within Liverpool Township, and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for construction bids. This was a customer-driven project. The third one is authorizing change order number two for the Medina Road, State Route 18 Water Main Relocation Project for Express Underground. That was ODOT's road widening project, and that's just to balance out the contract quantities. The fourth is declaring the necessity to relocate an existing sanitary sewer along Heatherhedge Drive within Lafayette Township, and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for construction bids. We're hoping to get that advertised into mid to late January. And the final one is authorizing the sanitary engineer to purchase an international single cab and chassis and hook lift hoist truck through state purchasing. This is part of the Ohio Diesel Mitigation Grant through the EPA. This is the second of two awarded vehicles.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Jeremy, one question just on the Heatherhedge relocation that is for the...
EMA.
EMA building.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. All right, we will move on into our department updates. First off, we have Greg Brown from our county home. Good morning, Greg.
Good morning. Starting with our census, we're currently at 40 residents. However, due to skilled care, we will be losing one in January. As far as staffing goes, this month, we just had our intermittent second shift staff LPN start, which was excellent. We're still looking for full-time second shift and part-time first and second shift LPNs. We've had amazing outpouring from the Medina County residents at the home throughout the year, but of course, during this time especially. Food, monetary gifts, it's been really amazing. A lot of the events that the residents have been having, I always put them on our Facebook page, so if you want to see what's happening at the county home, go to the Facebook page. The Thanksgiving meal was amazing. Aramark put out another great spread. There was only one resident that I know of that actually could finish the second plate, so, yeah. I posted a picture of that. You have to see it to believe how big that first plate was. For December events, one December marks the clutter Christmas party kicked off, another great event for the residents. December 2nd, the Santa's Rain Dogs, hosted by the Best Paws Forward Therapy Dogs came in. That was a really neat event. The 15th of December, we have the friends in Medina County Home and the Rotary, they provide a meal from Pickle Mamas for the residents, something really special. Nice, nice tablecloths would make that a really special time. And then, the biggest note, the biggest change for the home right now is, starting yesterday, the home went to masks, again, staff and visitors coming in as well. The signs have been posted at the doors. It's the same time as it was last year when everything was hot and provide care for our residents. I have to make sure that we're protecting them. That's all I have.
Excellent. Very good.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Denise, Denise, there she is. Next up, we have Denise Testa from our Planning Services Department.
Good morning. Okay, so getting right into the numbers. So for the end of the year, we're looking at 33 major subdivisions and close to 1,360 new sublots coming into the county, 41 minor subdivisions with 83 sublots. So that puts us at a total of nearly 1,450 new sublots just in Medina County. So we're very excited to work with our townships and our developers on that. Regarding the planning commission, so for January, we are looking at a replat, reviewing a replat in Liverpool Township, and a final plat in Sharon Township. So it's a little light compared to our November meeting. And we will also hold our officer elections for that as well. We are all planning on attending the Medina County Township Association Dinner next week, so we're looking forward to seeing some of our colleagues that we haven't seen in person for a while at that. We were approved for the NOACA EV, Electric Vehicle Charging Station program, so you'll most likely be seeing some paperwork come through that I might need signed, as well as for our chip grant, as in addition to us and the city of Watchworth, we were both approved for our chip grant, so we're very excited to see that come through as well. And then tomorrow night, I'm looking forward to presenting a planning and zoning workshop in Westfield Township. So looking forward to that. Would you like to talk about the Hinckley memo right now, or do you want to do that in discussion?
Sure.
Okay. So I did give you a, for your consideration regarding the Hinckley Township Comprehensive Plan Update, they have requested $3,500 to assist with a total, to assist with the total cost of $7,500 to update their comprehensive plan. As you probably know, Hinckley is a very active township with development. They are very much a partner with the planning commission. And as a result of the increased development in Hinckley, I believe that this comprehensive plan update is very important, not only for their community, but also for our builders and developers as well. So it is my recommendation to award them the $3,500 if you agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a motion?
Yes, a move, move to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Denise, two questions for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go.
First off, the 1,450 sublots, are those sublots that were approved in 2021?
Yes.
Okay, so you have any prognostication of what's looking?
You know, I have not heard. It's been a little quiet this last month. I mean, we had the 10, you know, agenda items in November, which was very much not a surprise. But I haven't gotten any sense for what we're looking at for 2022 just yet. So, I mean, I know that there are a couple of preliminary plans that are on the queue to come through as final plats. But there's a lot of, there are, there, you know, and we have four concept plans come through in November as well. So in addition to the 10 agenda items, we reviewed four concept plans in November. So that's a very good sign that we're going to have a strong 2022 as well. And those four concept plans are pretty far along at this point, so I wouldn't be surprised to see some additional. But we have our State Route 94 corridor project, that one mile area in Sharon Township that has literally five subdivisions, even either in the preliminary plan stage or the concept plan stage, so...
So it's north of Wadsworth and south of 18?
Correct. It's actually south of Fixler Road. You could even, it's like a one-mile corridor there that we're working also with ODOT on an access, a conceptual access plan. But, you know, it, all indications are is that we're going to continue to see the trend. But I haven't, you know, received any kind of personal phone calls, I guess, to say, hey, we're bringing this in next year, other than those concept plans.
But I think we can also surmise from this that our building department, well, if the rates are low, will be busy next year in terms of residential construction with 14,050 new lots, residential lots.
And inspections.
The next couple of years, I mean, those things are going to fill. So that's, they're the cutting edge. And that's the indicator, Andy Connor and I were talking about that just earlier before the meeting, the impact when it comes to not only building, but also our stormwater management department and so forth. The things that have to go into place for these new residential buildings, it means a, if the rates are low and people are still building, we've got the land already set aside for them, so, yeah.
So my other question is, there are a number of townships that are at least talking about redoing theirself. And I think a couple of them, at least, are working with OHM. We're having discussions with them. Would there be any possibility that we could negotiate like a master agreement with OHM and save money? And then if a township wanted to use them, they might get a preferential rate?
I could check in on that for you. I can get back with you. I mean, I'm familiar with OHM. At least two of their representatives are also working with the city of Medina, so I don't even know if there might be additional entities in addition to our townships, if there are some cities and villages that might be interested in that as well. But I can certainly check into that for you.
Now, there's like three or four, like Eastfield, I think Homer's talking about it, and there's some other ones that are talking about reviewing their zoning.
Correct. I agree. That's a good point.
OHM is working with our Transit Department on their plan. And, oh, anyhow, I just wonder if there's a way that we can leverage.
I can certainly, if it's okay, I can check into that for you. That's a great idea.
Right.
Okay.
Denise, I did want to bring up, as part of our public record too, indicate that the planning commission did review the proposal for creating the unincorporated area for Senate Bill 52, this exclusionary zoning. And was there any feedback you wanted to provide?
Yeah, so regarding Senate Bill 52, that is the wind and solar electric generation citing authority. So yes, the planning commission did have positive feedback regarding our initial proposal of declaring all of our townships as exclusionary zones. The overall sense of the meeting was, or tone, rather, was in support of that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, we have Jim Dieter from Medina County Soil and Water. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Something to pass out to you today. What I just passed out was basically our, an annual report up through October from the beginning of the year. It kind of goes to our technical events that we've accomplished over the year. Eric did many of those, along with myself and others in the office. I won't go into great detail with them, but you could see the numbers and stops that we had. Also, I want to thank the different townships and cities that allowed us to get some news articles, particularly about Phase II into their newsletters. We certainly got more the targeted area that we want to hit with the Phase II communities, and as you could see, it's quite substantial there. The back page kind of covers some of our financial statement at this point, through October. Obviously, that number will go down by the end of the year, the next few months. Public events that we had, basically for Phase II communities, and also just miscellaneous events and annual meeting, they're all kind of graphed out there for you. It's kind of a new program that we got, and hopefully we could utilize that more to pass on cleaner information for you that you can see. Other things, I'd like to thank Colleen for hosting our annual meeting. It worked out real well. I think it was very well attended, and the show with Medina Raptor Center was just a great thing to see. We also introduced our big tree for next year, which is going to be the white pine, correct Eric? And so that'll be next year's big tree. Other things in the office, we did receive two grants that Abby Costello secured to do additional education materials, particularly targeted toward Phase II communities. So that'll work out real well. The other thing I wanted to mention, as you know, I will be retiring the end of the year. And we did find a replacement, which will be Eric Hange, will be our new district manager for the soil and water office. And welcome, Eric. And he'll go through some other trainings that the supervisors want done, and he'll be doing that. So, and I don't have, that's all I've got for today.
All right. Well, thank you, Jim, and thank you for your service to Medina County and the Soil and Water District. It's been appreciated. It's been fun to work with.
And I appreciate working with the commissioners and all the county staff on different things over the years. Thank you. You have a good day.
You too. Okay, we have a few commissioner resolutions, and I've got one, just general liquor announcement. Our first resolution this morning is commending Patrick Grimes for 22 years of service to Medina County. He has been working with the Medina County Sanitary Engineers Office since April 19th of 1999. He has worked well with folks at the sanitary engineers' operations, good problem-solving skills and comprehensive and technical job knowledge. He has just done a great job over the years. And so the Board of Commissioners wish to recognize and honor Patrick for his commitment and diligent work during his career as a water distribution worker. And he has commended for his 22 years of service with Medina County Sanitary Engineer Department, and the board wishes to take the opportunity to offer best wishes for his retirement. So, can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Our next three resolutions are appointing folks to various committees. The first one is to appoint folks to the Medina County Flood Plane Board of Appeals, and we are appointing Jeff Brandon, Tom James, and David Williams to terms expiring December 31, 2024. The next resolution is appointing members to the Medina County Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund, and we are reappointing Fred Geismann and appointing Ken Baca, both with terms ending December 31, 2022. And lastly, we are appointing commissioners alternates to the Medina County Planning Commission, and we are appointing Adam Esker for Commissioner Hambley, Tom James for myself, and Cliff Nowack for Commissioner Sweating.
Move to approve all three resolutions.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And we have one liquor permit filing this morning. It is a transfer request from Medina Grill and Pub LTD to Medina Wing Company, LLC, DBA Buffalo Wild Wings, located at 5050 East Point Drive, Medina Township, Medina, Ohio. And this is for a D5 and D6 permit, which is a spiritus liquor for on-premises consumption, beer, wine, mixed beverages, for on-premises or off-premises in sealed containers until 2:30 a.m. And a D6 is sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of 10 a.m. and 11 a.m. and midnight, or 11 a.m. and midnight. So we are not requesting a hearing on it. That is just for the record. So before we go into our discussion session, Steve, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I would move to go into executive session for the purpose to discuss imminent litigation, to discuss security matters, and to discuss the compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We'll get them all.
Yes.
One way or the other. Okay, so we're going to go into discussion session now. Does anyone wish to address the Board of Commissioners this morning? Hearing nods? Steve?
No.
Very good. We are going to go into executive session. We will come out of executive session and adjourn our meeting formally.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
So we are out of executive session now, back into general session. We do have two discussion items related to ARPA funding. The first is related to the Veteran Services Office. They have a request for about $400,000 that they need an answer on so they can pursue other grant opportunities if available. It is to renovate their garage in addition to their garage to add a walkway and additional meeting space at their facility. So I don't know if you two have had an opportunity to look at it?
And Amy, this qualifies.
So what I would recommend that I could do for Amy is similarly to what I just did in terms of the jail parking lot, I could cite sections and let you know how I do believe there's more than increasing space because of their increase in service to the veterans and then also the garage to allow them the opportunity to clean their vehicles properly and it should be covered.
And I'm supportive of the project provided obviously it is covered or qualified for the ARPA.
I am too.
In the initial sheets, I went back and looked at them, there was a specific section that was identified. I wish they qualified, but if we could verify that, that would be great.
Thank you.
And then the next item is again ARPA and it is the jail parking lot. And there are actually a number of different things that are listed here. The jail camera system, human services, I guess that's not the jail. But anyhow, the jail parking lot in particular does qualify under ARPA. And so the question is, do we want to proceed with that particular project as an ARPA project?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Yeah, and having reviewed, thank you so much for that level of detail. I didn't first understand how or whether it could.
Yeah, you can have a lot of issues.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah, but it's just not generally water, but you have to do a bit more. But I agree that that's going from the engineering perspective, that is how they're going to approach. And I agree that we should support it.
Okay, so I think that's it. So Amy, if you could get back to us on the Veteran Services Offices, then we can let them know maybe next week if we formally approve it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. Moved to adjourned.
Okay. Hamley?
Yes.
Swatette?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you, Brian. You did a great job after me.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great week and we will see you next week.